Good afternoon. I welcome everyone here and would like to call to order this public hearing for Tuesday, May 9, 2023. This meeting is regarding the Lancaster School District Appeal of Fiscal Watch. We do have a quorum this afternoon. I would like to begin by asking the parties involved if they could introduce themselves, and we'll begin with the representatives from the district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Alex Shearhead. I'm an attorney with White &amp; Story Law Firm here on behalf of Lancaster County School District, and I have a few guests here with me if I could introduce them briefly.
Great. Please do.
So we have our Board Chair, Mr. Brad Small, Board Secretary Tyler M. Faulkner, Board Member Courtney Green, and Eddie Boykin, as well as our Superintendent, Dr. Jonathan Phipps, our CFO, Mr. Tana Norris. We have Mary Phelan, our Director of Finance, and our former interim CFO, Melanie Jeanette. And I appreciate them being here today and taking my time out for the Lancaster County School District. We travel as a pack, I think, so that's a good sign.
I know. You did very well making all of those introductions. I'm impressed. Thank you for that. And then, from the State Department's side, I know?
Yes, Madam Chair. John Tyler and I have counsel for the Superintendent of Education, as well as South Carolina Department of Education, many of whom are present in the building today. And I will try not to go through all the names.
Thank you. Okay. Procedurally, Lancaster School District will have the first 10 minutes. The State Superintendent, or those speaking on her behalf, will have 15 minutes, and then the district will have the last 10 minutes following that. At the conclusion of those arguments, though, the State Board will adjourn so that we can discuss in executive session the matter. So with no further ado, though, we will begin with the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, again, my name is Alex Shearhead. I'm here on behalf of Lancaster County School District today in their appeal of the fiscal watch declaration issued by Superintendent Weaver on February 3, 2023. Just a personal note, it makes me really proud to be here today as a product of South Carolina Public Schools, Abbeville High School, Class 2008. And also, you know, thinking of all the decisions that were made in this room and in this building that impacted me, also as well as my mother, a 44-year educator now retired in Abbeville, so I did just want to take a moment to appreciate that before we get into it. Today, Madam Chair, members of the Board, we're obviously here to appeal the fiscal watch designation issued by Superintendent Weaver, who I welcome today. I'm not sure if she was able to make it, but welcoming her administration here. My first opportunity to be before her administration in a hearing like this. One thing I'd like to say about all the facts that have been very well briefed by both parties, I have to say, you don't need to be a legal or financial expert to see the issues at play here. I know, looking at audits sometimes, my eyes can kind of glaze over with all the numbers and things, and looking at statutes and cases, my eyes will kind of glaze over again in looking at those types of things. But in particular, what I would like for you respectfully, Board members, to focus on are the words of the statute in the Fiscal Practices Act, or Act 23, for what we're here about today, and that's 59-20-90. One thing I kind of want to get out of the way first is, this fiscal watch declaration was issued under Section C1A-V. There's a lot of sections to this statute. But one thing that we're not here about today is anything to do with any law enforcement investigations, missing money, fraud, exercising outside of generally accepted accounting principles, anything like that. We're here about material weaknesses and deficiencies that appeared in Lancaster County School District's audit. And one thing, you know, in South Carolina, our state Supreme Courts and Courts of Appeal has said, you know, when it comes to agency determination, who better than to look to and defer to than the agency, right? And that makes a lot of sense, and I have no problem conceding that, and that's the appropriate way to do things. However, in the law, there's always some exceptions. And those three exceptions, what we call compelling reasons to overturn Superintendent Weaver's declaration, would be if there's any decisions that were made that were arbitrary and capricious, or made contrary to law. And today, I'm going to point out three situations where those compelling reasons, reasons to overturn her declaration, should be considered. And so, starting with that, first of all, the lack of statutory authority to issue a continuation in this case, to begin with, failure to follow the basic due process as required by the statute. And then, my final point is what's most important, in my opinion, the Board's de novo review. And de novo is a fancy Latin phrase that us lawyers like to say that just means new, fresh, new. And if you compared our briefs, my worthy adversary here, Mr. Tyler, we both agree on that definition, that what we're here today to do is for this Board to have a fresh, new look at the set of circumstances. So back to my first point, that, you know, going back even a year from now, on February 28, 2022, former Superintendent Spearman issued a fiscal watch declaration to Lancaster County School District. We appealed it here, weren't successful in that appeal, and respected the Board's order and decision in that regard. That fiscal watch declaration had to do with a food services account and some sort of internal controls in a different way to present that in our audit and our financials. And that was done. That was the, in our financial recovery plan that was put into place, those actions were undertaken, and our auditors came back and said, "You did what you were supposed to do," gave us the big green check, so to speak. So then, moving forward to this year, 2023, on February 3, the district received a letter from Superintendent Weaver issuing what she referred to as a notice of continuation of a fiscal watch declaration, which, in our view, doesn't exist under the statute, plain and simple. There's no provision in the statute that allows for that, and I do want to back up and concede one point, there would be a situation if, for the superintendent to continue a fiscal watch. If that issue was related to the food services account, let's say hypothetically, the district didn't correct that item, then sure, we could concede. I wouldn't be here today, but there was a continuation. However, in reading Superintendent Weaver's letter, you'll see that she admits and concedes that Lancaster County School District corrected, and that's her word, corrected, the food services account issue. And going beyond that, if you refer to the brief of the respondent, Superintendent Weaver, there's a quote that appears over and over again, and it says, "In order to be released from fiscal watch, the district needs to provide an audit devoid of significant deficiencies and material findings." And I'll note, every time that's cited or quoted in the respondent's brief, it's on page 1, page 5, page 6, page 7, you'll note there's no statutory citation to that, because it doesn't exist in the statute. That's plain and simple for anyone to see. You know, this whole approach and this fiscal, this mandate from the state legislature, it's not a check-the-box approach. It's not, oh, there was a material weakness, or oh, there was AIDS, you know, some sort of deficiency. It requires more than that. It requires an examination, and if you look at the statute, "in the opinion of," and that "opinion of" is an important part, it's not the mere existence of that. And that's what we would argue, that in this case, Superintendent Weaver took that old issue and used it to springboard into these new issues that I'm going to get into next, as far as the due process provisions go. So if you look to the statute as far as due process, this is my second point, it says in the statute, "The superintendent shall declare a fiscal watch only after prior notification with the Board Chair and Superintendent, who must begin immediate consultation with the CFO of the district. The notification, the watch notification must include steps that the district may take to avoid their declaration." Plain and simple, as plain as I'm standing here today, that didn't happen. There's no exhibit that says that, there's no quote that says that, it didn't occur. There was no discussion, cross-communication, anything like that to the district about these new issues in their 2022 audit that the superintendent used from the 2021 audit to springboard this, what she defines as a continuation. And interestingly enough, on the department's own website, and I included this as an exhibit in my brief, there's a listing of all the fiscal actions that were taken this year, and by Lancaster County School District, it says, "Lancaster, watch, fiscal audit year 2022, declaration date, February 3, 23." There's no mention of '21, there's no mention of a continuation, there's nothing like that. So, you know, in our opinion, by the department's own admission, these are the facts. This is what they told the world while we were on fiscal watch, these things right here. But if you look at the letter, that's not what they said, and that's why we're certainly here today to argue those points. Also, too, very quickly, as a part of the Fiscal Practices Act, the district, whether we appeal it or not, we're required to submit what's called a financial recovery plan, right? The department has taken a position that we have a condition that is going to, could potentially harm our district so bad, so, you know, in defiance of all sorts of fiscal responsibility and things like that, that we have to submit this plan ahead of time. We have to cooperate with the district. We submitted that plan. The statute says we have to submit it within 60 days of the declaration. Lancaster County School District did that. And on the other end, the superintendent has 30 days to respond, accept, reject, or modify. None of those three things were done. To this day, the district still hasn't heard back as far as its financial recovery plan is concerned. And so, those are just some things, a part of the due process that were not met, start to finish, when the door opened and when it closed, that we believe that Superintendent Weaver and her team did not meet when it comes to ensuring us, as Lancaster County School District, whether the substance of the matters, you know, getting into those later, making sure those procedural issues were taken care of. You know, in working in school districts and working in public schools, due process is important. You don't change placement of an IUP student without what? Meeting with the IUP team. You can't just do that without providing the prior written notice. You can't expel a student without a hearing. You can't fire a continuing contract teacher without giving him or her the right to a hearing. And so, comparing those two things, those are the boxes, those are the things that the department, in our opinion, Superintendent Weaver didn't do. And finally, to my third point, looking at this issue de novo, we started with three material findings. 2021 was the food services one that we've, has been admitted that we've corrected, and there were two more. And this is where things get interesting, because our auditors actually, we had two material findings, and our auditors actually had to restate, recall and restate our audits because they made a mistake. They made an error and actually withdrew one of those material findings, having to do with some reconciliation accounts with the county. So, looking at those things and acting in good faith, we think there's enough here for you all, as the Board, to find two things, we didn't get the due process, excuse me, three things, we didn't get the due process we deserve, there's no such thing in the statute as a continuation, and based on your de novo review, we don't have those material weaknesses in plural form that's required to be on fiscal watch. And with that, I'll hand it over to my worthy opponent, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. May it please the Board. Before I get into this particular matter before the Board, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the South Carolina Fiscal Practices Act, as I believe that is very pertinent to your Board's decision today. The Fiscal Practices Act, South Carolina Code 5920-90, was enacted in 2017. It authorizes the South Carolina Department of Education to identify fiscal practices and budgetary concerns that, if uncorrected, could compromise the fiscal integrity of a school district. And secondly, it advises districts to take corrective, authorizes the agency to advise districts to take corrective actions to fully address these concerns. Within the Fiscal Practices Act, there is established three levels of escalating fiscal and budgetary concern, which the superintendent must declare under circumstances addressed in the law. The first and lowest level of concern is fiscal watch, which is what we are here about today. The second and intermediate level of concern is fiscal caution, and finally, the third and highest level of concern is fiscal emergency. Much of the concerns anticipated by the Fiscal Practices Act are found within a district's annual audit. Every year, the school districts are required to submit their annual audit to the Department of Education by December 1. Thus, for Lancaster School District, the fiscal year ended on June 30, 2022, and they had five months to timely submit. Now, for a little background on the specific matter before the Board today, Lancaster's appeal of the continuation of this fiscal watch. The Lancaster County School District remains on fiscal watch for a second year due to material findings in their annual audit. There's nothing arbitrary or capricious about a district remaining on fiscal watch for having material findings in their own audits. On February 28 of 2022, last year, the former superintendent issued a declaration of fiscal watch as to the school district. The district appealed before this Board, but the Board affirmed the former superintendent's declaration of fiscal watch. The reasons they were placed on fiscal watch are found in the Board's order, which is Exhibit B to the superintendent's brief, and essentially, it lists material deficiencies in the district's June 30, 2019 audit, related deficiencies in the 2020 audit, and then again in the 2021 audit. Three years of deficiencies indicating a reasonable probability that material deficiencies will continue. Specifically, this Board held, and I read here, "The last three audits have found the same material weakness, and the district has acknowledged the weakness and provided the same corrective action three years in a row. The superintendent followed the mandates of the Fiscal Practices Act and correctly declared a fiscal watch following the district's continued failure to correct a material weakness." And here we are today, after a year of this agency providing technical assistance to the district, still talking about material deficiencies revealed by the Lancaster County School District's audit. The law is it relates to this. Section 5920-90(c)(1)AV provides, "The superintendent shall declare a fiscal watch if the department identifies significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, direct and material legal noncompliance, or management letter comments which, in the opinion of the department, the aggregate effect of the reported issue has or could have a significant effect on the financial condition of the district." That's a lot to unpack. Shall, it's mandatory, the superintendent must declare under these circumstances. Significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, again, these are the types of things that are revealed in the district's annual audit, and then significant effect on the financial condition of the district. While the statute makes the declaration of fiscal watch mandatory and offers little room for discretion when certain conditions are met, the South Carolina Department of Education has given discretion as to when a district may be released from fiscal watch. Specifically, 5920(c)(4) states, "A district under a declaration of fiscal watch must not be released from fiscal watch in the same fiscal year in which the declaration was made, but may be released the following fiscal year if the department determines that the corrective actions have been or are being successfully implemented." Thus, being released from fiscal watch is a matter of discretion whereby the South Carolina Department of Education must be satisfied that the district's corrective actions have been or are being successfully implemented. And while the food services account issue may have been corrected, the district has referenced that internal controls were of a concern, and those internal controls related to different deficiencies remain to this day. The department's concerns have not been resolved, and therefore, the district cannot be released from fiscal watch. While the district corrected those deficiencies found in the fiscal year 2021 audit, its fiscal year 2021 to 2022 audit reveals additional deficiencies. In the fiscal year 2021 audit, they have provided two audits. One was provided 35 days after the statutory deadline, and the second was provided 84 days after the deadline. Both of them contain the following material deficiencies. And so, in order to defer to them at this moment, I will simply focus on the restated audit. The first deficiency in the restated audit is that the district underreported revenue to its special revenue funds in the prior fiscal year by $771,000. You'll find this in Exhibit E to the superintendent's brief at page 167. According to the auditor of their choice, this is a violation of generally accepted accounting principles. The district must recognize revenue in the fiscal year that it is received. The district lacked the internal controls to ensure that this failure would not occur. In addition to this violation, it lacks transparency to the taxpaying public because it misrepresents the district's financial position. The second deficiency is the district's auditor discovered that one of its schools inadvertently excluded the Student-Pupil Activity Fund from its prior year's financial statements. This is risky behavior, as these funds tend to be cash donations, which, of course, are the most liquid. A lack of proper accounting for cash donations raises concern for the potential for misappropriation. These material findings would be enough to place a district in good fiscal standing on fiscal watch. Let me state that again, these material findings would be enough to place a district in good fiscal standing on fiscal watch. Because Lancaster is already on fiscal watch, the South Carolina Department of Education must not release them in the presence of these material findings. In response to some of the issues raised by the district, the website referencing a declaration being issued on February, in February of 2023, the agency certainly will update the website to reflect that this is a continuation. It was perhaps not anticipated at the time of the creating of that table that a district would fail to be released from fiscal watch. Secondly, there is an admission of the consistency of issues between internal controls being part of the original fiscal watch and the continuation of this fiscal watch. As to the issue of prior notification for a declaration of fiscal watch, that's addressed in the superintendent's brief at pages 8 and 9, but briefly, I will just state that the district fails, it fails to recognize that the district has not been released from fiscal watch and remain under fiscal watch to this day. The prior notification occurred in February of 2022, and this Board found and upheld that that notification and everything about that fiscal watch was and is still appropriate. In 2023, after the district has failed to convince the department that it should be released from fiscal watch, the superintendent sent a letter notifying them that the fiscal watch is continuing. The statute does not require prior notice on this matter. That's the law. It does not require prior notice on this matter. The statute does not even require the superintendent to issue a letter that the fiscal watch is continuing. However, it would be appropriate communication with a district that is already under technical assistance and fiscal watch. The district is asking for the State Board of Education to ignore requirements of the law by overlooking ongoing concerns that, if uncorrected, could compromise the fiscal integrity of the Lancaster County School District. The continuation of this fiscal watch is appropriate after the Office of Auditing Services has been providing technical assistance, has identified multiple material weaknesses which, in our opinion, and the district's auditing firm, could have a significant effect on the financial condition of the district. The district's audits speak for themselves. I respectfully request that you, the State Board of Education, affirm the State Superintendent's continuation of her declaration of fiscal watch in Lancaster County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. And Mr. Sherard, there'll be 10 more minutes that you can answer to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, that's a lot to unpack, both sides. This is a complicated statute, it's a complex matter. Again, going back to what I talked about at the beginning, you don't need to be a financial or legal expert to see the holes here. And I think by looking first at the things that Mr. Tyler didn't mention, no mention of the financial recovery plan, if there is something that we are, that Lancaster County School District is in such dire straits of being, their fiscal condition being disrupted, why would there be no response from this agency when we're providing our end of the deal? Within 60 days, we submitted that. That's basic math. The Superintendent Weaver had 30 days, and still to this day has not provided, even though it was made known to them in our brief that we filed on April 28. You know, we do have a common goal here, to all do the right thing, what's right for our kids, first of all, our taxpayers, our constituents, and we just find that there being no response, no modification, no cooperation, really paints it within a broad stroke of the whole attitude and the actions here of the State Department of Education. And there are some things in particular from Mr. Tyler's response that I do want to touch on, as far as the superintendent's discretion, when he mentioned the superintendent shall. And we agree with that, we understand that. But that doesn't take away her power to look at that, what is the, in the opinion of, that opinion, looking into what's happening here and what's going on here. This food services issue, Mr. Tyler was correct, I sat right here, stood right here and argued that same point about a year ago, a little more about the same issue. Those issues came up three times in a row, and we were put on fiscal watch, and we submitted to the Board's order in that regard. However, we also did what we were supposed to do. We did what this agency asked us to do, not only according to Superintendent Weaver herself in saying that they were corrected, but also according to our auditors. There's a section in our audit, in one of my exhibits, that they talk about that last year, 2021, issue being resolved. So I don't understand why then, we're then punished, take, you know, where this issue's been resolved, I think it's pretty undeniable from all points of view that it's resolved, but yet it's being used against us for an issue that's totally unrelated, totally not significant to food services. It's this, the other two issues had to do with, like I said, reconciling some monies from the counties and then the pupil activity funds within the district. The reconciling the issues from the county, that's what our auditors, they came back. I haven't been doing this for a lifetime, but representing more or less than 30 school districts across this state, I've yet to see an audit firm rescind and restate an audit. Been through a lot of those presentations and board meetings, never seen that. And so, to say that's a pretty extraordinary step for them to admit their mistake and then withdraw that and strike that issue. So that really leaves us with one material weakness. And notice I said weakness, and in the statute, it requires multiple weaknesses. And I know that might seem petty, right? That might seem semantics. But that's what in our South Carolina Supreme Court, they require us, our Supreme Court, that we look at the plain, ordinary language of the statute. And this statute requires multiple weaknesses or deficiencies, things like that. And in this case, we have one that's corrected, admittedly, by the department, we have one that was totally withdrawn, and then that leaves one left. So I find it, you know, difficult to argue that there are weaknesses that we should be sanctioned under this fiscal watch designation. Also, too, in regard to the removal, again, we don't argue that the superintendent doesn't have discretion when it comes to removal. She does, absolutely does. It says "may." I said that in my own brief. However, the arbitrary part of that is when, the arbitrary part of that is the superintendent admitting that it's corrected and then using it against us. That's without reason, that's without logic, that, hey, you're good to go, here's your checkmark, but actually, sorry, we're going to use this against you, to create this continuation, which already doesn't exist in the statute itself. You can Ctrl+F the statute, the word "continuation" isn't there. The only "continue" is there is that we continue to provide cooperation with the State Department of Education, which we clearly did, in submitting our financial recovery plan. There is no provision regarding continuation. There are provisions regarding declaration, which I, you know, declaration and continuation are two different things. And that's what the Department of Ed told the entire world, that we were, this fiscal watch declaration based on anything and everything 2023, or from our audit 2022, but in 2023. There was no mention of the food services, no mention of those prior issues at all. And so, there is some, there's a discrepancy there. I don't I don't know where the, where things fell apart or where things didn't quite line up, but that's the job of this agency, not the job of our district to come back and correct. We're doing our best to submit these audits and do things to the best of our ability while supporting these thousands of kids that we're trying to educate on the ground. And more so to that point too, the lack of transparency and risky behavior, again, leads me to say, why hasn't the department yet responded to the plan that we've put forward to correct their purported issues? We've at least more than met them in the middle in that regard. And then also back to our due process provisions, the due process provisions, again, that I cited to you in my brief, as you'll notice from a presentation of the same, of the finance department here at this, at this agency that's currently a part of a PowerPoint slide today presented to the SCASBO organization, which is all of our financial folks from our districts, saying that, that if there is a declaration slash continuation, a phone call, reaching out, communication with the district will occur. And that's something that we were thrilled to see when our CFO went to the SCASBO convention and saw that because that's what the statute says to do. This isn't some sort of newfound, you know, area of cooperation. That's what the statute already requires. So we do recognize and appreciate the department's ability to reach out in the future, but what about us? If that's their future plans, we were lost and we fell through the cracks. And just in blatant fairness, fairness to Lancaster County School District, mostly to its students, but to its hardworking staff, to its teachers, to the future of Lancaster County School District, one of the fastest growing districts in this state. These fiscal watch designations and things like that, while they are a great tool for this agency to oversee our districts, there is a stigma that comes with it. And I think just at the bare minimum, at the bare bones, when it comes to fairness, due process and doing what the statute says to do, I believe that Lancaster County School District did that and I don't believe this agency did that in this case. And I look forward to working with the agency in the future, coming to the table and figuring out new ways to make sure that we can all comply and get together to make sure these processes are easier. And with that, Madam Chair, I respectfully request that this board overturn the fiscal watch continuation declaration from Superintendent Weaver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scherrard. For our board members, are there any further questions before we move into executive session? Mr. Harrington?
Yes, I'd like to ask you a question. Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Did I understand correctly that there's been multiple years in a row where you had material findings on the audit?
Where there were multiple years in a row?
Yes.
Yes, so in 2021, there was a material finding related to food services and that was the one that was corrected according to her letter. And the ones, the one, the only one that remains was related to the pupil activity funds. So there was, in different areas, but yes, material findings.
I'd like to ask you, using an analogy, if you have, if you have a write-up because you've got, don't have repair on your dam and you have two leaks in it one year and the next year you don't refix those leaks, but you got another leak, you should be, not have to be under requirement to repair the dam?
No, sir. And that's, that's not, our argument would be there's nothing leaking. There was no waste of funds. There was no misappropriation of funds. These were internal control issues that were addressed and corrected. And according to the statute, we, if there are new issues that came up, sure, but where's the due process that follows?
I understand the due process, but I don't, I'm not sure it applies in this case. But the question I'm asking is, do you not feel like that you have, should have one year of fiscal clarity and a clean audit before you would be released from a watch? Does that not logically make sense to you?
Well, so putting logic aside, we have to look and see what the statute, what the state legislature, which we've all elected, have elected members on, have put in the statute. That's what we have to go by and what we believe a court of appeals or Supreme Court, they don't, they don't look to logic. They don't look to reason. They look to the plain, clear, ordinary meaning of the words in the statute. And for better or worse, that's the standard by which if either party were to appeal, that a higher level arbiter would take a look at.
Would you agree that if every other school district takes their fiscal responsibility important enough to make sure that they don't have material findings and audit, that we would be admissed if we found an exception for one school district?
I'm not, could you clarify your question?
My question is, it seems like the focus should be on improving the quality of your financial accounting practices and procedures and policies and not on resisting oversight.
No, sir. And that's, we're not here to resist oversight. We're here on appeal, which is allowed by statute, given that this situation was not handled following the statutory scheme passed by the legislature and mandated by the legislature to this agency. There's nothing in the statute that requires perfection. There's nothing in the statute that says you must be clear for X length of time with no deficiency, with no finding, with no, any of those things. That's just, it's not in the statute. If that's something that the legislature wants to adopt, then sure, but we all have to be held to the same standard and that the standard is, in the opinion of, that's a part of the statute, in the opinion of the superintendent, looking into those deficiencies, weaknesses, things like that, and not simply checking a box. And that's, that's our argument.
Thank you for your response, Mr. Scherrard. Are there any other questions before we move?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Dr. Hanley.
So, Mr. Scherrard, you rightly state what the statute says as far as to put a district on financial watch. And you rightly say that there is no mention of continuation. However, do you not agree that the statute does also not, in no way does it require to take, have the superintendent take the district off of financial watch, given a certain timeframe? And that, as I interpret the presentation of Mr. Tyler, instead of a new declaration, instead, I interpret that as they did you a courtesy by allowing your district to know that we have reviewed your files and that we are going to continue. However, I don't see a requirement for them to even notify you that you're going to continue, that the next notification would be, okay, we're considering taking you off of financial watch. So do you see it the same way I do? Am I misinterpreting things?
So there is a statutory provision about, about removal. And under the statutory provision about, and I can't recall it, it's in my brief, under the correct, where I mentioned corrected, I can't recall the page offhand. But you'll notice in my brief, I emphasize or bolded that word corrected. It says, if a district, and I am paraphrasing, not quoting, if a district, if the issue is corrected, then the superintendent may remove. And our argument here is that she admitted that it was corrected, excuse me, Superintendent Weaver, admitted that that issue was corrected. It matches up to the statute perfectly, using the same word, corrected. And we would, we argue that because of that, it's not that, she could have very easily said, you had this issue from '21, we still have some concerns based on this issue. She didn't. She said, this is corrected. The statute says she may remove if corrected. And that's what we find arbitrary. It's arbitrary in that if you're admitting that something's corrected, admitting that there's no problem with it, the statute says that word corrected, there's no room for argument, in our opinion, that it's anything but arbitrary in that case. And there was a second part of your question about courtesy, if I?
Yeah, well, so as I understand it, it wasn't, it wasn't that there was a part of the statute that said, in these circumstances, you will continue, but that the decision to continue, which, you know, the statute again just says, you put a district on financial watch or fiscal watch, as the statute says, fiscal watch. But no, there's no requirement to notify you that it's being continued, but instead they did that as a courtesy, as I see it.
I think I understand what you're saying. So your question is that the statute doesn't mention any sort of notification?
Of a continuance, correct.
Of a continuance, correct. So what we would argue in that instance is going sort of down a level, that we may still argue as being arbitrary, if you look at our initial audit, our auditor said it was corrected. So that's when we would pose the question to the superintendent, and I realize that's a different circumstance, right? And what actually happened here, the superintendent came to us and said, hey, it's corrected. However, had it not been corrected, and we look at our audit page where it lists 2021-001, which is one of my exhibits, and our auditor says, hey, y'all have done everything you're supposed to do, we, you know, in theory did everything that in our financial recovery plan, and that's when we would come to the Superintendent Weaver, whomever on her staff, and say, what's the issue here and why not? I don't think that the statute allows any, the agency or superintendent to hold any school district under any sort of fiscal watch caution or emergency in perpetuity. I don't, I don't see that as being an option without it then becoming arbitrary and capricious.
Now, the way I read the statute is that there are some requirements to get a district onto watch or other more severe levels of supervision, but that it gives the superintendent great latitude and discretion as far as removal.
And I agree with you. And in our, believe in our reply, we address that, that we agree that word "may" and "shall," those are very different, you know, I draft policies a lot, those are two very different triggering words. But in this case, again, and I don't mean to say this beating a dead horse, so to speak, but here she comes out and Superintendent Weaver in her letter says, it's corrected. So if it's corrected, she agrees it's corrected, we certainly agree it's corrected, our auditors agree it's corrected, why then is it being held over our head to avoid the due process, to avoid the response to the financial recovery plan, those types of things? That's, that's where it's purely arbitrary. There's, to us, no middle ground there.
Thank you for that reply, too. Were there any other questions of other board members? Mr. Walters?
Madam Chair, and if you deem it appropriate, I'd like to give both attorneys a chance to answer this question.
Yes, please.
Because it seems to be central to what's going on here. In Superintendent Weaver's letter, the quotation starts with, "The SCDE recognizes efforts made by the district to correct previous finding," and it goes on from there. In the appellate brief, it states, Weaver acknowledges the district corrected it. So my question for both attorneys is, and is referenced several times, and page four is where it first shows up, is recognizing efforts made to correct the same as actually correcting. Is that an acknowledgement that the correction took place?
And Mr. Scherrard, if you'll answer that first and then we'll let Mr. Tyler.
For both of you, but you can start. Yes, sir. We would say that, you know, identifying the department, the agency here recognizes the efforts made by the district to correct the previous year's findings, absolutely, that's, I mean, using that word corrected, it was corrected. And in respondent's brief and in Mr. Tyler's oral presentation here today, that's not disputed. If you read into their brief, he admits in the brief that that issue is resolved. Again, there's really no room, especially going secondary, looking at our auditors, what they had to say about it, I don't see how that there's any gray area there when we have the two parties and then even an external party in the auditor saying that those issues are resolved. And, you know, those were the letters that superintendent, or excuse me, the words that Superintendent Weaver, you know, chose to use in her letter to us, to us, the district. So I'll let Mr. Tyler respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the, with the letter, with the letter in front of me, under, under the district's construction of this, they could have had 74 material findings and still be free and clear of fiscal watch. Yes, this letter recognizes that the efforts made by the district to correct the previous year's findings, but then it says there are findings listed above, which certainly have a similar concern to the concern that existed at the time of the fiscal watch. So while those particular findings may have been addressed, the concern was not and is still not relieved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Any other questions by any other board members? Okay. Hearing no other questions, is there any objection to the board going into executive session? Hearing none, we will adjourn for executive session and we will go up to room 806. And Mr. Gunter will join us as legal counsel for the board. I believe we have everyone. We thank everyone in this room for their patience as we deliberated. We were able to deliberate on the issue and at this time we'll entertain a motion regarding this appeal.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, make a motion that the State Board of Education affirm the state superintendent's declaration of fiscal watch continuation for Lancaster County School District.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrington, for your motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hanley. Is there any discussion? When we vote on this, we will vote by raising our hands and please hold your hand up long enough for your name to be recorded. So we have a motion. If you are in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that is unanimous and so that motion does pass. With no other business before us this afternoon, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, wow. Did you catch that? That's a lot. We are good. That's a, a motion and a second. We stand adjourned.